All right, so good evening, everyone. Welcome to our city council meeting of June 22, 2021. In the interest of the government transparency with regards deliberations of decisions made by the city council in according to the open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, can we have everybody mute themselves, please? There's a lot of noise in the background. Since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is being recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. And if you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options or communications or the public hearing to be recognized to speak. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. I'm going to reiterate this several times over the meeting to how to get in. So if you're calling on a phone, you can press star nine. And if you're watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button. So use any of these to recognize speak during oral communications or the public hearing. So from my top left to my bottom right, we have Council McCarthy, we have myself, Council LeBlanc, we have Council Holmgren, we have Council Gilman, Council Memhard, Council Pat, Council Cox is having some internet issues and Council Nolan will be absent this evening. And Council O'Hara usually gets in right around this time, so he'll probably be joining us any minute. So we do have a quorum of the city council. We have a majority, we have six of us, so we can proceed with any vote this evening. Madam, and we also have our CFO, John Dunn, our city auditor, Kenny Costa, and our city clerk, Joanne Seanos. Joanne, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is oral communications.
Thank you. So during oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency, the mayor, office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within two weeks period relative to disposition of same and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each and the council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performances. So is there anybody that would like to speak under oral communications this evening? If you are calling in, you can press star nine. And if you are watching, you can, there is a raise hand button. Council Pat, I see you have your hand during oral communications.
Yes, two things I see. First of all, Council O'Hara has joined us. And also, I'm not sure I heard you say that we have Chris Carenza, the assistant to the chief administrative officer.
I did not, but thank you for bringing that up. We do have Council O'Hara joined us and Chris, my apologies to Chris. He's at all of our meetings and it was just an oversight before we got the meeting going. So welcome to the meeting, Jamie, and always a pleasure to see you, Chris. So during oral communications, there was a raise hand button or you can press star nine to request to speak. Anybody during oral communications? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is the confirmation of new appointments.
Thank you. And Council Nolan is not with us this evening, so I will be reading the motions.
And Robert.
For ordinance administration, hold on one second. All right, so let's start off. We have the Human Rights Commission. And let me see, we have Mica. Is that, I'm sorry.
Michelle McCaffery, I'm here.
Hey, I'm sorry. It's just my Gloucester accent.
No worries.
Michelle, how are you doing, honey?
I'm doing well.
It's very nice to see you, so I'm glad you made it here. So do we have any questions? Before I do that, let me, let me read the motion. She was here during last week's ordinance in, Michelle was here for the ordinance administration standing committee. And we were very, I was very impressed and I'm sure the rest of the councils were impressed with her wanting to be on the Human Rights Commission. So when we voted here unanimously, so I am going to read the motion and then we can have council discussion after. So ordinance administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council appoint Michelle McCaffery to the Human Rights Commission term to expire 21422 and I so move.
Second.
All right, do we have any council discussion? Council Holmgren.
Michelle, thank you for applying. Your resume and cover letter are outstanding and you've attended some of the Human Rights Commission meetings on Zoom and I have no doubt you will be an incredible asset to this group of people, so thank you.
Thank you all.
Anybody else? Okay, Michelle, have you, I know you, I know I asked this at ordinance administration, your ethics test in swearing in.
I did, I did all of it.
Anybody else before we move forward? All right, Council Nolan has roll call. He is not here this evening, so Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes, and thank you for serving, Michelle.
Council Cox is not with us. Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, 100% yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes, and thank you for volunteering.
And Council Pat. Oh, I'm sorry, Council.
Do I get to vote?
Memhard, I'm sorry.
I'd like to vote to support you. Thank you very much for joining us on the commission. Thank you.
All right, Michelle, our roll call passes on a roll call of seven in favor, two absent. So welcome to the board. And if there's anything that you need from any of the city council or the mayor's office, please reach out to any one of us and we'll be happy to guide you through the process or answer any questions for you.
Well, thank you all so much. I look forward to serving. Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have John McCarthy. I'm sorry, John Orlando, let me get him in here. All right, John, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thanks, thanks for being here tonight, bud.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anything you'd like to say before we read your motion?
Well, I'm very pleased to be serving on the licensing board. With, with my experience on Main Street and 40 years and 26 years on, on Western Avenue at the Bed and Breakfast, think I cover a lot of categories that we might be falling into. And I hope that I can, can add to the brilliance that's already on that commission.
I'm sure you will, John. Serving the city and being a cornerstone of the boulevard and the downtown for many, many years, I'm sure you'll have a lot of insight for this board. So I will read the motion. Ordinance administration voted unanimously to recommend the city council appoint John Orlando fulfilling an expired term to the licensing board term to expire 5/31/26 and I so move.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded by myself and Council O'Hara. Any council discussion? Council Pat.
Yes, I'd just like to say that obviously with the decades and decades of experience in all different aspects of business in the downtown area, I think John will be a tremendous asset to the licensing board. He adds not only a sort of a fresh outlook, but he also has that historical perspective that can add a lot when certain things come up. So I'll be supporting him wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Barry. Anybody else? Council Holmgren.
I agree with Council Pat 100%. John, thank you very much for willing to serve on this board, which is a busy board. And it's a, it's a big responsibility and I am very excited and confident that you'll again be an asset to it, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Council Gilman.
Thank you. I ditto what's already been said. John has been always quite a professional. He owns a wonderful business and he's involved with almost every community affair. And I think he'll be a great asset to the licensing board. So thank you, John, for signing up for this. Appreciate it.
Thank you all so much for your kind words.
And I don't have enough words to say kind things about you, John, but you know how I feel about you, bud. We love you.
Thank you, Steve.
So we have a motion and a second, and we're going to go with Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes, thank you for your continued dedication to the city, John.
Thank you, Joe.
And Council Memhard.
John, thank you very much, yes.
All right, motion passes on a roll call vote with seven in favor, two absent. John, you've been sworn in. Ethics test, everything?
I have had the Essex, the ethics test and I have been sworn in and I'm good to go. I even, even got the 90 day card.
You passed the ethics test?
Yeah, the Essex, the ethics. And by the way, excuse me for adding this, but by the way, Barry, I could do with less decades.
Well, we all could at this point in our lives, John.
Thank you all.
We appreciate you volunteering and then if you need anything, you know all of us and definitely reach out.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure volunteering as well.
Thank you, we appreciate it. I'll see you soon. Thank you, John.
Yep, bye bye.
All right, so that concludes our appointments. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Is the consent agenda.
All right, is there any city councilor that would like to pull anything off the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as, as written.
Second.
All right, we have moved by Council Gilman, seconded by Council O'Hara. All right, Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
And Council Memhard.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, two absent. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please. Your honor, Joanne.
Next order of business is the budget and finance standing committee report of June 17.
All right, I'm going to hand it over. Council Cox is not with us this evening as of yet, but I will hand it over to the vice chair, Council Memhard.
I don't have all the templates in front of me for this, but we'd like to move ahead with a consent agenda for budget and finance as presented in the evening's minutes. And I so move unless anyone wants to pull anything off of it.
Second.
Hold on, Val, do you want to pull something off of it?
I do. I'd just like someone to at least read item number four, which is a huge grant of 223,561 82 to the public health department. So if someone could at least read that, I think it's significant enough that I'd like to remove that.
You want to handle it or you want me to handle it?
If you have the template there, Steve, it'll be helpful if you went ahead and did that. Thank you.
I do have it. Council Gilman basically explained what it was. It's a grant for 223,561 and 82 cents for the purpose of improving effectiveness and efficiency of local public health by committing to regional shared services agreement to develop sustainable business models in the grant period is from June 30, 2022, and there was no local match, so.
And good work to our team for advancing this to the board of health.
So we're not amending the consent agenda for, for this. We were just, as a point of information, so we won't have to. So Council Memhard has moved it and Council McCarthy, you want to second it?
Jamie seconded it, I believe.
I did.
All right. I'll third it.
There you go. So it's been moved by Council Memhard, seconded by Council O'Hara, thirded by Council McCarthy. So consent agenda for budget and finance, everybody understand all the motions? All right, I will call for the roll. Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
And Council Memhard.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes to accept unanimous consent agenda for budget finance passes on a roll call vote, seven in favor, two absent. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Is the committee report of the ordinance and administration meeting of June 14.
All right, so ordinance administration voted unanimously to recommend that the city council adopt the following code of conduct. And I'm going to read everything. So code, city Gloucester City Council Code of Conduct. Number one, purpose, the professional conduct and civility of the city councils is of paramount importance to the city of Gloucester. The concerns of the constituents are often diverse and divided, therefore maintaining a public forum and work environment where people can disagree through civil debate remains in the forefront of a healthy democracy process. Okay, number two, applicability. And this is on there twice, Council Gilman. So I don't know if I should read it twice, but the same sentence is this policy and all its sections covers all actions and communications, whether spoken or written, including but not limited to electronic communications, including social media. I'm not going to repeat that because it's in there again. Number three, code of conduct, city council should assume the following conduct. Counselors shall work with the chain of command specifically through the mayor's office and or C A O to enlist the support and skills of city staff in addressing the needs of the community. The authority of the city council, the governing body can only be exercised as a board regardless of our individual vote until the decision is rescinded, set aside, or amended. City councilors will abide by the open meeting law and regulations and see that those requirements are communicated and followed, except for matters taken up in executive session. All decisions of city councilors shall be made public. City councilors should comply with city anti harassment and anti discrimination policy. City councils must comply with applicable laws, including with, without limitation, the following, the open meeting law, procurement laws, and the ethics slash conflict of interest statute, the general laws, section, chapter 268A. Conflict of interests violation, violence, ethics violations, or discrimination on the base of race, sex, sexual orientation, age, handicap, religion, or national origin are unlawful and not should show up and do not reflect the values of the Gloucester community. City councilors are expected to maintain civility in all discussions and debates and are not tolerant and not tolerate speech or behavior that is belligerent, disrespectful, threatening, abusive, despairing, or this, as this behavior impedes the democratic process, encourages hard feelings, and. Got a tongue twister here. The businessness, my tongue, I got so much to read. I apologize. Contributes to the voter and staff. Alienation dialogue should focus on issues and refrain from personal criticism. City councilors who witness unprofessional decorum in public meetings that is contrary to the spirit of the code of conduct shall call a point of order using parliamentary procedure. City councils who are bystanders or witness to unprofessional behavior caused by a work environment or problem situation can obviously support the victim by first letting them know they are not alone. Second, affirming that the behavior is not acceptable. And third, can be helped by identifying resources for the future further follow ups. Bystanders intervention, intervention is about empowering yourself to be part of the solution. A productive working environment where everyone is striving for a sense of mutual respect, trust, collegiality, and inclusion in an environment where things are going to get done and done well. Number four, enforcement and education. It is the duty of all elected officials to self police and hold themselves accountable to the code of conduct. The enforcement of the code of conduct summarizes as follows. It is the role of the council president slash board of chair to enforce the code as needed. Any city council who has violated the code of conduct should be promptly asked by standing committee chair, council president slash vice president, or any member of the council to apologize. If the infraction occurred in a public meeting, the apology should be made in public, ideally at the same time of the incident or the decision at the next scheduled meeting. If the infraction was not witnessed by members of the public, an apology should be made promptly. And the victim of this, the victim should acknowledge that the apology has been accepted. The council president shall take, shall notate that the code of conduct violation has been duly resolved. Enforcement of the code of conduct, including the decision of the governing board to publicly reprimand or censure. If members of the elected board repeatedly violates the intent, I think it's supposed to say intent. It says tenant, okay. Tenant of the code of conduct, he or she may be asked to attend training session offered by MIA, M I I A. It is the responsibility of all city councils to request, request that the council president hold annual governance, governance meetings where a self assessment of the compliance of the code of conduct shall be placed on the agenda. And number five, distribution and consent. At the beginning of every term, the city clerk shall have each, shall have each elected official sign the statement that they have read this code of conduct resolution. This signed acknowledgement will be kept on file, remain easily accessible to everyone, including municipal offices, employees in the public. In the event that any member declines to sign the form, the fact shall be noted by the city clerk on the form. I have read and understand the Gloucester City Council Code of Conduct and will comply with the requirements set forth in this disclaimer. And all city councilors' names are on here and I so move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Um.
Counsel.
Hold on, before we start, I have a couple, I know you want to get into this, but I have a couple, I have a couple of questions before we get into the weeds with this. So when, when we're sworn in, aren't we already agreeing to abide by open meeting laws and regulations with executive session in city? And shouldn't we, and also, so that's one of them. And then it says city councils must include, without limitation, the open meeting law, procurement laws, and the ethics conflict of interest statute. When we're sworn in, isn't that part of our oath? I don't understand why we're signing this again after we've already been sworn in at the inauguration to do this. So this is kind of like doubling down. I mean, so you were the, you were the creator of this council, Gilman. Would you like to answer that?
Right, and I, and I did want to amend the motion, but seeing that we're discussing it right now, I can hold on that. So I actually incorporated that because that was on the mayor's draft code that the HR department set out. And I thought that it was worthy of including, so I took that right off that document. And if it, if it's repeated, it's, it's repeated. I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing. It just reminds us of our obligations. That's all.
And my other question is chain of command. So the chain of command starts off with the city councilors, then it goes to the vice president, then it goes to the president, and then the president will notify anybody else through the mayor's office. Being a military person, Barry, Barry will tell you that. You normally don't jump the chain of command. So the president is the leader of the city council. So any, any matters that need to go to the mayor's office should go through the president and the president should deal with the mayor's office for any. And that's up at, let's see here, chain of command. Where yeah, counselors shall work with the chain of command specifically through the mayor's office. So the mayor's office and the city council are two different bodies, so it doesn't make sense to overstep the chain of command, which is the vice president and the president, and go straight to the mayor's office. Barry, do you, do you understand what I'm saying, correct?
I absolutely understand. And I mean, the mayor's office is the administrative branch and the council is the legislative branch. I'm not sure, maybe Val can explain what she's saying and maybe we need to change some wording here, but as the sitting council president, you in this case, absolutely would have to go through you before it goes to a different department.
Not necessarily for me, but by the president, yes. So that, that would be the proper way to go through the chain of command, correct?
So.
Okay, I'm just trying to hash this all out before we vote on it because some of it's inconsistent.
So can I respond to that as?
Absolutely. It's a question.
So what that is talking about are things like requests to the mayors, which always needs to go through the mayor. And it's reminding us that we really need to always get permission. I'll give you an example. There were times where I wanted to meet, have a, like an hour session or half an hour session with Mike Hale. You know, sometimes when, when we have a real quick issue in the road, we just, we talk to each other. You know, you're a ward counselor, I know you work with him quite a bit. And this is just a reminder that if, if we're going to be asking for something more than that, we need to go through the chain of command to get that permission. And it, this was on the MMA best practice document as well, which Council McCarthy and I attended in January of 2020. And it's just, it's just a respect. It's not, it's not anything other than just reminding all of us that we can't be going down and talking to the city engineer or taking the city engineer's time. That's not how we do things. We do things through the top. And sometimes there are issues that come up that are ward issues regarding emergency or something. And it's just a reminder that we shouldn't be digging deep and we want to be respectful to the chain of command. So that's why I believe that it adds value to this, this, this code of conduct.
I appreciate the explanation, but the chain of command is still broken.
But the question, the question is, yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Val, about, you know, like request to the mayor to go about other departments. But I think by the way it's written, it sort of leaves open the possibility for a counselor instead of going through, say, the vice president and the president on to the administration to go directly to the administration. And then the city council president, the vice president don't know anything about this issue and it should have gone up through them somehow. So I'm not, you know, I'm not questioning what you're trying to say. I'm just, the wording is a little bit off to me in the sense that, again, like a chain of command. Yes, John?
Jen, Jen, do you have, Council Holmgren?
Are we deliberating or are we still in question?
We are, the motion's been read, we're in discussion right now. So this is, this is a deliberation, this is council discussion.
Thank you. I, I, I've worked very hard to develop a collegial rapport with the department heads in this city. And I have the, the pleasure of being able to interact with them on a one to one basis than I have for years now. And I, I just don't know if this is going to help or hinder us in terms of going through the mayor's office. And I strive to include the mayor and pertinent members of the city council and administration in my questions. I've never come up against difficulty in getting information. And I understand that respect plays a huge part in it and it is on both sides, but I, I don't know. I mean.
So Jen, what I think Val's trying to say is if there is, if there's an issue with getting something done, that the chain of command starts then. I don't think she's saying that you have to go through the president or the mayor's office, you know what I mean? We can still have our rapport with our department heads and reaching to them, but what I think she's trying to say is through, if you make a request or if you have an issue with one of the department heads, that's what she's asking.
Okay, okay, thank you.
What I'm trying to say is the chain of command is broken if you go above the vice president and the president and go right to the mayor's office. That's not called the chain of command. I mean, Council McCarthy would tell you, he's got a chain of command through the police department. John, you want to specify on this or?
Yeah, I mean.
Whatever you have to say.
I kind of think we might be overthinking this and it might be able to be solved with, I think every councilor here goes to the administration and the department heads. I know, I was a department head for a lot of years and they. To the administration and the department heads, I know, I was a department head for a lot of years, and they do. But there were a lot of times when, if it was something that I thought, um, needed to go through the mayor's office, I would request. And every one of you have come to me for something, and I've, I've told you that you need to go through the administration first. So that you don't get me in trouble with the administration, so if you're talking about the council's chain of command. I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that we always go through the vice president, because the chain of command would actually, if you, if you want to belittle it. Would start at the vice president to the president.
Right.
And, and I think we ought to just put something in there that says, um, you know, a- as a courtesy, we notify the president of the city council that we're going to do this. Because I, I always call you Steve and tell you, I'm going to estimate for this, or estimate for that, so I don't think it's. I think we're overthinking it, and, and if that's your thoughts, maybe we put down, you know, um, some, uh, just a. Uh, one line in there that says, after notifying the council president.
Right, and that's, that's what I'm trying to get to, the chain of command gets broken, if we go above the president or the vice president. Um, that's, that's why it's called the chain of command, because there's chain links, and if you break the link, then you've gone above and, and beyond. What you're supposed to do, and it is for the city council, so, um, you know, this, this is, we're, we're going to adopt this. So it does need to be worded differently, um, in my, my opinion. Um, because the chain is broken if you go over the president and go right to the mayor's office.
What would you recommend, councillor, um, if we do an amendment?
The council, whoever the council president shall be notified that this is going to happen, or at least included with the email, because that's kind of keeps everybody in the loop. Um, like Barry said, and we all know that we have two different bodies of government here. Um, what we're voting on is a city council code of conduct that we should be doing, so if you go over the city council. As it states, um, going right to the mayor's office, you've kind of gone over the council's code.
I think, I think John's commentary of adding that line might be appropriate, uh. John, would you repeat that, uh, and then maybe we can, maybe Val can, or someone could, when we get to that point, can make an emotion, you know, to amend or something. I, I was, I was happy with it.
Go, John.
I, I, I would just simply add, um, that we go through the chain of command after notifying, um. Or, or in, uh, in coordination with notifying our council president, if available, if not a council vice president.
That's fine, I don't have a problem with that.
Because I, I really don't think, Stephen, I, I think you and I agree on this, you couldn't stop any individual councillor from going to the administration. It's, it's simply just a, 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 a proper thing to do to notify you that we are going, that's all.
And I agree, but if we're going to vote on something, it should, it should state what we're, how the chain of command works.
So, can I, through the chair?
Yes.
May I just read what I think might make sense, councillors shall work with.
Why don't, why don't we make it an amendment later on, and then we can discuss the amendment? So if you read what we're going to put in there, we're going to deliberate on what you're going to say, so if you want to make it in an amendment in a little bit. Then we can deliberate, then we can have the discussion on your amendment, so hold off on that, we're still doing, um, councillor discussion. So, get all your amendments ready, Val, and then we'll, we'll, we'll vote them one at a time. Um, alright, and then, so my other question is, and I think we kind of answered this at O N A, but we have people on here that weren't on O N A. Um, so what are we doing for, so if a councillor steps out of line, and we ask them to attend a class. And they disagree to attend the class, or they don't do anything wrong, um, what's the next step, what happens? Nothing.
Do you want me to answer that? There's really nothing you can do, it's, it's a recommendation by M I I A. Um, in her webinar, um, Regina Ryan, and, um, this was a suggestion that was made, it's. It's sometimes useful, and the person has the right to say no, because as elected officials, we really. Um, are held accountable by the people that vote for us, not for, um, a code of conduct. But it's just, it's a, um, it's a possible remedy that you can use as a tool, and that's about the extent of that, so.
So, um, I mean, with, with hu- human nature, you should just be cordial, period. Um, I know that some of the debates we get into, they get heated. Um, you know, people will ship, say, whatever councillor, whatever, you're right, you know what I mean, there's, there's. There's body language, um, there is, um, I, you know, and, and all the debates that we've had. Over the past two years, or fifteen, sixteen months, um, not only that, it's over the past almost ten years for me. Um, during debates, they've gotten heated, but they've never gotten disrespectful, um, you know, I just don't want somebody. Taking a, um, body language as just throwing, you know, doing one of these things going. You know, as, I mean, is that disrespectful when somebody says something that, you know, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure. What a violation is going to be, um, I, I, and I'm going to make myself as an example, because I don't want to put anybody else out there. Say, I, I, I rebut somebody, and I think I'm perfectly fine, but the person that I rebut thinks I was disrespectful. Um, so where does it go from there?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, this is what we're doing.
Oh, so I would say that the person that feels that was disrespected. Should call you the next day and say, I felt disrespected with the comment that you made in the meeting. And then have a two-way conversation about it, and, um. And if the person receiving that agrees that it was disrespectful, or maybe they didn't mean it the way it was interpreted. Um, they would just say, um, lesson learned, um, I didn't mean it to be interpreted that way. I'm glad you talked to me about it, and, and it's over, it's not, I don't think we need to, um, make this more complicated. Than just a good reminder of how we want to have ongoing civil conversations, two-way. Dialogue with good feedback as quickly as it happens. Um, and that's the way it's designed to work, and it's, it's nothing more than that, that's all.
No, I fully understand, and I think that when we take our oath of office on January first of the year we're elected, I think that we. Basically agree to that, we're standing up there, and we take an oath, we put our hand on the Bible, we raise our hands up, and we say yes. To, to all this stuff, um, you know, I mean, I, I, I think this would have been a lot better sixteen months ago. I mean, I don't know why we're doing it sixteen months later, um, I said a lot of things at O N A, I'm not going to repeat tonight, but. Um, from, from what I'm taking from this is when there was a lot of things going on in the mayor's office. This was brought forth to, uh, the majority of us as a tool to help, um, control the mayor. Um, after we found out that we really can't control what the mayor is doing, um, we proceeded to do this as a city council. Um, and I, and I'm going to say, and I'm not disagreeing, we should all be, we should all be, um, civil to each other. Um, I, me, have been nothing but civil since day one, um, after what's happened that. I'm not going to repeat what happened in inauguration, but I, I've appointed people to, to jobs, because it's the best thing for the city. Um, not my personal preference to, to benefit me, um, we've, we've done the best thing for the city. Um, and I just don't see where, where it's come about, where any of us has been really dispect- disrespectful. Um, we've had an incident that was blown way out of proportion, that, um. And if this is from that, I mean, we shouldn't be doing that because of that silly little incident, but. I'm not disa- I'm not disagreeing with this, but I just think that this is, uh, you know, daylight and a dollar short at this point, at, at the end of our term. Council home group?
Thank you councillor, um, I, I have to say I agree with some of your points, uh, it. We have just all emerged from this horrific pandemic, it is not over. We are in right now a very politically charged environment, uh. I mean, my sense of the council is that we're divided on many things, uh, including.
And we should be, but that's a good council.
And that's fine, that is fine, um, but I, I don't, I, this, I, I know councillor Gilman, you've done a lot of work. On this document, I know you have researched best practices, um, I have, I have looked at the information you've sent us. It's from towns, it's not from cities, uh, from a lot of towns, city government is different. Um, I, whether, whether you see it or not, I see it as a weapon that is being used against the mayor. And I realize, and, and so does she, um, per the statement that she issued today, that she has some work to do. Um, I am certainly happy, uh, to do the work myself, um, I see that you and I are both attending. The respectful workplace training this coming Thursday, I'm looking forward to it, um. I understand that, uh, the human resources department has reviewed, um, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, a code of conduct for city employees to follow that's been vetted by our insurance company. Uh, and that, I think, okay, thank you, alright, uh, so Chris is giving me a thumbs up, um. I think that that would probably, a, a policy like that would outlive administrations. It would outlive councils, it would outlive appointments, uh, it could certainly be amended. Uh, but i- i- anything like that, that's vetted and approved by our insurance company, I would be a whole lot more comfortable. Supporting than something like this, which has just, which has been put forward in a very, uh, um. Charged political environment, so I, I don't think I can support this tonight.
Right, and, and, and just to piggyback off of council home group that said, um, I don't even know how many times this has been amended. Over and over and over again to try to get it right, and I still think there's a few things wrong in this, so, I mean, it's hard for me to support it with, with. With some of the things that are in here, um, you know, especially in the event that any member declines to sign this form. Shall, the fact shall be noted by the city clerk on this form, um, well, I mean, obviously it would be noted because the person wouldn't sign the, the form. You know.
That's, that's in the mayor's document.
Right.
Just to let you know.
Well, we're city council.
Are we still at questions or we at discussion?
Discussion, this is discussion, okay, we've had a, we've had a, a motion and a second, so we're in discussion. Um, councillor McCarthy.
Um, I'm listening to what councillor Holgram is saying, and my name's on this document, and I've been working on this for a year and a half. So, I don't see how you can equate it to the mayor's office in a weapon against the mayor, uh, it certainly isn't the reason that I joined this. I attended a seminar on this at the, uh, MMA conference over a year ago. Um, this actually started because of a different incident involving the city council, one of the first meetings I attended. Um, so I, I really don't think that's being fair, uh, to say that, that anybody, and there are five of us that have submitted this forward. Um, is using this as a weapon, I don't think that's the case, and I certainly know it's not the case in my, um, supporting this.
Okay, perhaps it got blown out of proportion in the newspaper then.
I think that, that I will sign a paper any day, every day. This says that I will try to uphold myself to a high standard, that I will try to keep myself accountable to. Me and my fellow councillors, that I will self-police, um, this may be a soft law, and Steve, you have said that, but I still think. Us signing this, we lead it as example, um, and I heard Jamie say it in the meeting last week. That anything that comes out of this is holding us accountable in the voting booth, you know. Um, the court of public opinion, um, so I have no problem signing this any day of the week, every day of the week. That I will do my best to do this, so I'm going to support this, thank you.
Yeah, I completely understand, John, um, council memo.
I'd just like to say that, you know, I agree a hundred percent with what John McCarthy just stated. And I want to express my appreciation for all the work that Val has done, trying to make this as applicable and appropriate for us here in Gloucester as possible. Uh, as I said in the, uh, O N A, um, meeting earlier, uh, when you discussed this. I think that any, uh, measure like this that helps us, uh, promote an image of. Of, of professionalism, working together in a constructive manner is, can only be positive. And it may not be perfect in all of its permutations and words, but the work, work that Val has done. And that Holly at H, H, HR has done, that, uh, Val has incorporated here. I think this is just an important step for all of us, and I will be supporting it.
Thank you Scott. Um, anybody else? Um, so before I call the roll call, um. I'm going to support this this evening, um, I, I. Hold on, hold on, you can make an amendment, if you, you want to make, after I'm done, um, and if you want to make an amendment to it, that's fine. Um, but I, I'm going to support this this evening, uh, because I do agree with John, we should all hold ourselves to a certain level. Um, which I know I have done, as all you councillors have known, um, but behind closed doors. Most of us know what goes on behind closed doors, and that's why I'm putting up a stink with it, um, because I'm up here trying to, to, uh. Make it aware that, you know, because we signed something, it doesn't mean it's going to happen, just so you know, and, and it's not me personally. I've, I've been nothing but cordial, nothing but professional, and nothing but respectful to every single one of my fellow councillors. Not only this city council, past city councils, and I will do the same thing to future city councils, but. Um, that's just my reasoning for putting up a big stink at O N A and asking some of these questions tonight, so, um, council home group?
I am not going to sign it, um, I, again, appreciate the work that's been done, I understand it. Uh, I try my best to do everything I can to represent, uh, m- my constituents. Uh, and to conduct myself as professionally as possible, um, I. I just, knowing some of the things that have gone on behind the scenes, uh, between, between some of my colleagues, uh, and myself. I, I wouldn't feel sincere, uh, in joining, in signing this document with, with some of you.
Thank you Jen, I said I'm going to support it, I didn't say anything about signing it, but I am going to support it this evening, council O'Hara.
Thank you, um, I just want to mention, we're all professionals, whether in our capacity as a city councillor. Or in our private life, um, and I think, as I've mentioned that at O N A, a lot of. The way we handle ourselves is common sense for the year two thousand and twenty-one, things have changed, uh, as councillor blank. And I know, uh, i- i- in, in, in us doing our job, whether here in Zoom. Or, or at city hall, uh, debates can get heated, um, I think that's healthy. For us to bat the ball back and forth as, as we've had, and as long as we're respectful of each other. Which in my six years as a city councillor, I can't think of really any time that, that, that. For the most part, has, has not been the case, um, but it will get heated, possibly sometimes someone may say something which. You know, might be off the cuff, but, uh, you know, again, we have a job to do to represent our constituents. We, we have to stand up for our constituents versus standing up for ourselves. And, um, you know, our constituents demand that, that we do our job, uh, and they ultimately make that decision. Uh, at the ballot box, um, so I, I, again, I, I, I support this, but I, I think a lot of this is just. Plain common sense, I, I think we've not so much exposed, but there, there isn't a whole lot that can be done. Um, should a councillor not want to sign it, sign it and not attend a class. Um, we have to act like professionals, and with that said, if, if for no other reason. With this debate back and forth, it just possibly helps us to be better councillors, and maybe be a little bit more professional. But I think we're professional as it is, um, but at least we think about it, um. And I, I want to thank Val, John, I, I want to thank all the councillors, this, this is a healthy discussion, and I'm, I'm glad we're having it. So, thank you very much.
Very well said, Jamie, we appreciate that, thank you. Alright, anything else, councillor Pat?
Yeah, just, um, again, reiterating what a lot of people have said. Uh, there's obviously been a lot that's gone on in the last year and a half, um, in the, uh. Uh, the pand- pandemic has done all sorts of things, and has changed the way we sort of operate. Um, uh, there have been, uh, issues within the city, uh, and I don't want to even get into what they are. And, um, I'm sorry to, uh, if, uh, any of the councillors here are, um. You know, have been harmed or offended, uh, by actions by other people, et cetera, um, I want to thank, uh. Uh, Val and, uh, John and whomever, uh, for all the work in putting this together, I don't think it's a, uh, perfect document. And I would like to see some amendments, whether it's tonight or at another time, and whether, uh, whether the councillors, uh, decide to sign the document. And whether, whether the counselors decide to sign the document, that's, I guess, a different, a different story. But I think as a just as a positive step, and as John had said, you know, signing or saying, whether it was on, when we rose our hand on inauguration day or any other time, I'm happy to say that I will do my best to represent, you know, the citizens of the community in the best, most professional way and be courteous to everyone, regardless of whether it's a counselor or another member of another department or anything else. So I will ultimately be supporting this this evening.
Thank you, Barry. Council Gilman, do you have amendments?
Sure, I'd like to amend the
You want to do them one at a time, or you want to try to bulk them together?
I think I can bulk them together with your approval. So let me work on the first one. Counselors shall work with the chain of command specifically through the mayor and her chief administrative officer, which includes the notification of the council president comma, to enlist the support and skills of city staff and addressing the needs of the community. That sound okay for that one? Okay. And the other one is very simple. And that's, I'd just like to move to amend by deleting elected officials on the first line of section four enforcement and education and adding city counselors. And in the fourth bullet, delete and an elected board and add the city council. And I so move.
Second.
There you go. So we have an amendment by Council Gilman, second by Council O'Hara. Any discussion? I think I'm, I'm fine with that. All right. So on the amendment, Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council La Blank, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
And Council Memar.
Yes.
The amendment passes on a roll call of seven in favor, two absent. All right. Now back to the main motion with the amendment. So we do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, Council Gilman.
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate what Council McCarthy said, in that the interest in this came at that January 2020 conference in Boston. And I actually circulated a lot of the examples when we came back. So this has been a long-term project. And I also believe very strongly that this is a boilerplate for moving forward together. As just a reminder of the importance of being civil. I mean, things have been, as Council Holmgren stated, a little bit tense during the pandemic. It's not the same. Not meeting in person and having everything on Zoom. And I think we miss out on some of the back and forth that we used to enjoy working together as colleagues. And I really think that this is something moving forward. Is it amendable in the future? Sure. You know, you know, I, I just think that it's, it's just a good start. And, you know, this, this council asks, asked me to put a little bit of teeth in it with some examples. And I worked pretty hard to do some things that are very basic, but they're just good learning tips of things that you can do. And sometimes when we're in the, the, in the moment of a meeting or something, there's a slip up. Sometimes we forget a process of which we should kind of remedy what we might have done, what we could have done better. And this is just a template to keep us on that positive note, because the more we show respect to each other all the time, and we've all had hiccups, the more the public has trust in us, and there's nothing more important than treating each other with civility and respect. So I will be supporting this, and I think this is the right thing for our council. Thank you.
Thank you, Val. Joanne, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So this is an ordinance change.
No, it's not an ordinance.
Okay.
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution. So this, this
It just comes out of, out of committee report.
Okay. So does, does this get implemented for the next city council? They have to vote on their own?
You can probably amend it, make it effective at a certain date. They would probably have to, if you're going to do this, it's a resolution and it's brought up for council vote, just like your civility one. And so the new council would probably have to have it on the agenda next year.
Do the same thing we're doing now.
And do the same thing now and, and vote.
Okay. And it's just a majority, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Just a, just a clarification. I just didn't want everybody to think that just because we're voting on this, this goes carries over to the next city council. So the next city council will have to go through the same thing we're going through this evening, just so everybody knows. All right. Thank you, Joanne. If there's nothing else, I'll call a roll. Anything else? All right, seeing none. Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
No.
Council La Blank. I've been on the fence with this. I, I, I we should be civil. I'm going to support it this evening, just to show support that I've been civil the whole time. Can't say too much for everybody else, but, no, well, not everybody else, but, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
And Council Memar.
Civilly, yes.
Thank you. That motion passes on a roll call of six in favor. Two absent and one opposed. All right. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is public hearing 2021-021, special city council permit 2021-003, Rogers Street number nine, map seven, lot 15, Gloucester zoning ordinance sections 2.3.4 parentheses nine, restaurant with an outdoor seating or with takeout constituting more than 20% of the total business. Section 1.2.1 purpose in section 5.18 Marine Industrial District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor. I see Council Joel Fabaz is here. So before we start, I just a couple rules real quick, just rules of procedure. Joel, you get up to 15 minutes for the proponent. The opponent will get the same thing. So we'll just try to be even across the board. Whatever you do, we'll get to the, you know, the opponent and vice versa. So just so you know. So go ahead.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Joel Fabaza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions at 123 Main Street here in Gloucester. Mr. President, with your permission, I would share my screen.
I'm, Joanne, can Joel get a screen shared, please?
He's all set.
Go, Joel.
Okay. And I am here tonight on behalf of Neil Mavor. He is scheduled to begin leasing the property down at nine Rogers Street. And he is hoping to convert the former group hub into a new year-round restaurant called Oak to Ember. And so we'll take you through this proposal. The reason we are here tonight, it's one of those funny things where the zoning ordinance, although well-intentioned, sometimes goes into overdrive. And so even though this was already a restaurant, for it to continue being a new restaurant, I have to come back to the city council for a permit for a restaurant with outdoor seating, constituting more than 20% of total business due to that deck that is on the southern side of the property, the southeastern side of the property. As far as exterior changes, there really are none, except that a doorway is going to be added facing Rogers Street, and that will become the primary entrance. The familiar entrance that faces St. Peter's Park will remain as an ADA accessible backup entrance. And also, I believe, as an entrance for the public that needs to make use of the publicly available restrooms, which have been provided and will continue to be provided going forward. By way of background, we are located in the Marine Industrial District, and as I mentioned, it was most recently used as a Cape Town brewery and pub. It was Doyans before that, prior to the moving over to Whistlestop Way. As far as background for the applicant, this is Neil Mavor. He was raised in Beverly, but don't hold it against him. He was a frequent visitor to Gloucester growing up. He's actually moved to Gloucester a few years back, and he's looking to contribute to the community that he's become a part of. He is currently the chef at Tono. And as Tono was opening other locations, he was actually selected by the owner of Tono to help helm the startup for the Wakefield location. And so I bring this up because he has, you know, experience in the kitchen, he's experienced managing, and he really is well-suited to can hit the ground running and do a good job bringing this new restaurant to life. I have included in the slideshow full-size sets of the plans, and just going to kind of quietly click through them. And if any counselor has a question, I'm happy to return. Again, real quick highlight here, the only change to exterior is the addition of the new doorway facing Rogers Street. And that is an artist rendering, again, heading toward the proposed new entrance on Rogers Street. So here comes the fun part, right? The legal stuff. We have two sections of the zoning ordinance that apply tonight. One is the very familiar 1.8.3 that has our six-part test that we'll go through. But also because we are in the Marine Industrial District, is also section 5.18 that has to be discussed. And we'll go through those now to make sure they're on the record for this hearing. Social, economic, or community needs. So first off, it's going to revitalize the grounds. This is going to be a large infusion of cash into the building. It's going to upgrade the exterior, upgrade the interior. It's going to contribute toward Gloucester's reputation as a dining destination. I don't know if you've noticed, but in the last decade or so, the number of, you know, new restaurants that are truly excellent have, have come to complement the longstanding restaurants that we've had in Gloucester. And we're becoming the place. I always joke about going to certain restaurants and saying, I can't believe I'm in downtown Gloucester and I don't know everybody in here. It's because people are coming from over the bridge into Gloucester to enjoy dinner or enjoy lunch. And we're hoping to be able to contribute to that reputation with Neil's project here. But it's not just for the tourist economy. Neil is hoping to provide a year-round meal option for those who work and live in Gloucester also. He's hoping to provide lunch and dinner service, and hoping to have a menu that has enough variety in it of both food options and price point options. And of course, this will bookend the Harbor Walk with an attractive coastal American cuisine dining option to traffic flow and safety. So the relocation of the entrance is being done in part because it makes sense to face Rogers Street. And it also makes pedestrian access safer. If you're coming across the sidewalk, you are, have a shorter, more direct path to the front door. You're not traversing the parking lot over at St. Peter's unnecessarily. But otherwise, there's no impact of traffic flow and safety. We are on one of the widest, most well-maintained streets in Gloucester. I can receive utilities and other public services. This is the same thing as traffic and flow and safety. Obviously, we are on Rogers Street. We have close proximity to the central fire, the police station. And the utility infrastructure is high capacity down here. This is the downtown area. Moving on, neighborhood character and social structure. So we're in the West End. It's a mix of historic, commercial, and industrial waterfront, plus supporting commercial endeavors. Again, this locus was most recently used as a restaurant with outdoor seating, so it's certainly not changing the current field of the property and the familiar field that we've associated with it for the last decade. As far as qualities of the natural environment, while the city council should, you know, keep an eye on it, it's important to cite that this property is under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. And so there is no intent to reduce green space on the site. Many exterior modifications to the grounds typically require going to the Concom for a sign-off beforehand. And for fiscal impacts, there is a city benefit, increased tax revenue, meals, tax, permitting fees, et cetera. There's short-term business impact. There'll be construction jobs and sales. And then there's long-term business impacts, again, contributing toward that critical mass of commercial destinations in downtown Gloucester. It really helps, you know, just join in with, with the commercial community down there and try and create a really robust local economy. And then we get over to section 5.18, and these standards are a little funny when applied to this property, because although it's marine industrial property, it's not waterfront property. It has no dock space. It does not birth any boats. So you go, will the use displace an existing water-dependent use? No, it was a restaurant. It's going to remain a restaurant. Is it going to preempt or interfere with existing or future development of water-dependent uses on the site or surrounding property? Again, no, this building has been where it is, I think, since the early 1980s. There was a small bump-out addition on the easterly side that was privated, I think, in 2013. Otherwise, it is where it's been, and it's not looking to impact anybody negatively by staying in its current place. Is it compatible with the working waterfront character of the zone? I think for the last 10 years, especially since it converted over to a restaurant, it's shown that you can have this restaurant use here as a supporting use and certainly be compatible with the working waterfront character of, of the Harbor Cove area. It's not going to displace any commercial fishing vessels, because again, there are no, there's no dock space here. And it's not going to adversely affect the preservation of water-dependent uses on surrounding properties, because again, the traditional history of this is that it is a supporting parcel, and people making use of the waterfront use the upland here for various supporting purposes. So if anything, it doesn't adversely affect its supports. And those are the legal standards we need to go over. I know I speak quickly, so if I rush past something and you want more detail, I'm happy to give it to you. Otherwise, for now, I'll say thank you and turn it back over to Council President La Blank. Thank you.
You're muted, Steve.
I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Joel. We had just over eight minutes. Good job. We have anybody else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? You can raise your hand. It doesn't matter one way or the other. All right, we have Janine. Janine, can you hear me? Hello, Janine.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can we have your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Jean Boland. I live at 30 Haskell Street here in Gloucester, Mass.
Thank you.
I am a former owner of the Rudder Restaurant in Rocky Neck. And I also taught in the School of Hospitality at Endicott College. So I've got some restaurant background and so on and so forth. I'm totally in support of this endeavor. And the reason I say so is because as a former restauranter, I stand here before you to say, this is going to offer Gloucester residents along with those cities and towns that are willing to come over the bridge, as you said, Joel, in a wonderful dining experience. It offers us, as I said, a new option for dining. It's going to certainly add to the revival of that end of town. Because this restaurant has been closed for a while, the brewery, and now to enhance the building and, and the options available to us, it would be a wonderful opportunity for all of us to have. There's no doubt it's going to create more jobs. And also, let's talk about the tax base. It certainly is going to expand our tax base, which we all want to have take place in Gloucester. If any of you have ever eaten at any of the restaurants that Neil Mavor has been involved in, then you can also say that it's been a very positive experience. And it's interesting, because of my background in the restaurant business, I go to a restaurant and I kind of assess the staff and the whole setup of it all. And it's interesting, because every restaurant I have been to that Mr. Mavor has been involved in, I feel the staff is very well-trained, friendly, wonderful rapport with the customers. And it's very impressive to me as a restaurateur to see what he's been involved in. So I just think it's going to be good for our city, good for those that want to visit the city, and good, just an overall positive thing for us. So I totally support it.
Thank you, Jean. We appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Thank you. And up next, we have Patty. Patty, can you hear me?
Hi, Steve.
Yep, you got it. Go ahead, Patty. Name and address, please.
Patty Page, three Title Cove Way. I support the restaurant here. I'm sure that Neil sounds like a professional. Sounds like a, a good fit for the right place. I did email Joel. I'd like to find out from Joel. Supporting use in the Marine Industrial DPA does require operational or economic support. So I'd like to hear how he's going to meet that. So I'd like to hear how he's going to meet that. And there is a management plan required for this property as far as what the water-dependent industrial use features on the property are going to cover. So I'd like to hear from Joel again, maybe if they've discussed that, how that's going to be handled. Thanks.
Thank you, Patty. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition of this council permit? If you are calling in on the phone, you can press star nine. If you are watching on a device or a computer or laptop or whatever, you sit home, watch, watching these things on, there's a raise hand button. You can press to request to speak. All right, public comment part of this public hearing, in favor and opposition? Going once? Twice? All right, we're going to move on to the next, next order. Madam Clark, are there any communications?
There is only one communication that was submitted on June 3rd, and it's from this property manager in support of this project.
Thank you, Joanne. And now we're on to council of questions. Any council of questions? Counselor Pat?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, Joel, as I've read through all of the documentation, you know, relating the property to the Marine Industrial District. And having heard your presentations and discussion with us at PND, et cetera, I had a couple of questions that maybe you could answer. Number one, I see there's something in there that talked about parking spaces or something for the harbor master. I don't know if that's still current, if there is something that's provided. And the second question comes in relation to the agreement that you and the previous people had that you said, I believe, was going to be continued for storage of the lobster pots for X period of time during the year. And I was just thinking, as I look at the dates of that, that this year, because of some government changes, it was later that the lobstermen, before they could get in, you know, into the water. So I'm just wondering if we could include language in your agreement that that you'd work with the harbor master to be able to, you know, accommodate the lobstermen. You know, that purpose is there for a reason. If you'd be able to accommodate, it might, you know, cut into some waterfront dining. But I think it's important as part of the Marine Industrial District to do that. I'd like to be able to ask if you'd be able to include that as well.
Joel, you want to answer that?
Sure. So to the first question regarding the parking space of the harbor master, it also touches on the question that Patty had as well. So there is an existing chapter 91 license on the property that was granted when the use of the property as a restaurant was first being started. As you've probably seen from the driving past, that there's a for sale sign in the window. And, you know, they're in the process of selling the property to a new purchaser. And as part of that, the purchaser is going through due diligence to make sure that the license requirements have been complied with and identifying where, if any, there's still work to be done. That, although relates to the use by my client, is outside of my client's direct involvement. You know, that's the landlord and the, and as the current owner and the proposed landlord is the current, as the current proposed purchaser. That being said, as far as this permit is concerned, I would take no issue with, you know, a condition. And this kind of speaks to Counselor Pat's second question about the lobster pots. I have no issue taking a condition that this permit is conditioned upon compliance with chapter 91 rules and regulations and any licenses issued. I think it kind of goes without saying, so it doesn't hurt to put it in, doesn't hurt to leave it out, as far as I'm concerned. As far as specifics with the lobster pots themselves, I know that before my client even began having plans drawn up, he began putting feelers out and speaking to some of the local fishermen associations to see how they're currently using the property, what was going well and what they would like to change, if anything. And at this time, it's been, you know, receptive, but there isn't a formal plan. So what's been happening on the property is kind of the default. I don't want to lock into saying it will be used for lobster pot storage specifically. Chapter 91 license is going to require that it's used for water-dependent uses, including lobster pot storage. But there's a chance that the Fisherman's Association will say, you know what, actually, we'd really like to be able to park some pickup trucks so we can get, you know, in and out of here with equipment, you know, and we'd rather move some pots around and put more parking or vice versa. And they say, you know what, there's some parking spaces now that we'd rather store some stuff on. And so I don't want to lock into this permit, what they're going to do. But if there's something, you know, in general, that the, you know, coordination with the harbor master, that sort of thing, I'm happy to do that. But otherwise, all I can report is that is ongoing discussions about how to best check that box for water-dependent supporting use. I just don't have a specific right now. So I would just say, relying again back in the chapter 91, which is going to require that whatever it is, whether it's lobster pot storage or otherwise, it has to be supporting the working waterfront. That's, you can't get around that.
Okay. Again, just thank you, just so that maybe you can include some sort of language. And I understand that some of this goes with the license, not with the applicant here. But just for confidence sake, say that there would be some sort of an agreement to work with the harbor master's office and the local fishers association to best address the usage of that part of the property.
All right. Thank you, Barry. Any other council of questions? Counsel McCarthy?
Yes, Joel. Part of your presentation was they're going to be open year-round. And I know that the licensing situation on the previous restaurant had flip-flopped a couple of times there. It was a brewery license, then a beer and wine that was open all year, and then they shut down winters with a seasonal liquor license. Has, have they obtained a year-round liquor license or are they in the process of doing that?
Yes, I can report that Neil is under agreement, assigned contract to purchase an all-year alcohol license that he would seek to have moved on to this location.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other council of questions? Counsel Memmer?
Thank you, Joel. It'd be great to see this property reinvigorated again. It has a wonderful history under Jeremy Goldberg as the brewery that we've all enjoyed and benefited from, done a lot of fundraisers at. Specifically, I would like to address the question of public access in terms of the bathrooms on the site because, as we all know, they're few and far between on the waterfront. Is there any provision for the restaurant to have accessible public bathrooms?
Yes, the floor plan does not actually move the bathrooms. The bathrooms will stay where they are currently. And yet, this was most recently the main entrance for the brewery is going to be repurposed as, again, the ADA entrance and the public bathroom entrance. And that, that will not change. The public will still have the right to walk in, use facilities and walk back out without having to spend any money.
Yes, Scott, yes, for information. We brought this up at PND and Joel was very forthcoming about how they were going to support that, you know, via chapter 91 requirements. It'd be really nice if we could actually ask, but it'd be nice at the front, at the main entrance or even a side entrance, could say, you know, public restrooms available, some sort of a sign like that. Doesn't have to be big, but I know we can't require it, but would be nice.
All right, thank you, Scott. Thank you, Barry. Any other council of questions? Counsel Gilman?
So based on what Counsel Pet was recommending, perhaps we could get a sample amendment from attorney FaVaza in terms of what we might want to do to amend this addition of working with the harbor master to best address the usage of requirements under chapter 91 licensing as a condition. Just so when, when we amend this motion, we'll have some language. And the, so that's one question. And the other thing I wanted to just suggest is that we, we would consider suspending the rules for the public hearing and allowing a Pixel XL, whose hand has been raised, to speak, because we had very few people speak in this. And it just seems like if somebody wants to speak, it would, it's a nice thing to do. So I still move.
Okay. Well, I was going to get to that one, it was my turn to talk, but seems to be a pattern where... So I know that it's during the public hearing part, when we're on Zoom, it's difficult to chime in. And I was going to ask that question, but so Val's got a motion to suspend the rules to allow Pixel to move. And Patty already spoke once, but we're spending the rule, so. Counsel O'Hara, suspension of the rules?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc? Yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
And Counsel Memmer?
Yes.
All right. So we're still on council of questions at this moment. When we're done with council of questions, we'll get back to Pixel. Any other council of questions?
The president would like me to answer Counsel Gilman's question about a proposed amendment.
When we get to the motion part of it, we're still in the public hearing part of it. So when we get to the, when we get to the motion, I think that would be the best way to, or before she reads them, we'll read the motion, second it. And then you can have a discussion and make the, and then Val can make the amendment during the discussion part, and then we'll go from there. I think that's the cleanest way to do it. Any other council of questions? Counsel McCarthy?
Yeah, Joel, maybe you could answer Patty's question now. I know it's the landlord's responsibility for the chapter 91 license. It goes with the property owner, but she had asked about economic support in the MI's. And if you could just clarify that.
Sure. So what I can speak to is that the prior license that was granted back in 2010, I'd leave a $20,000 contributory amount that was due to be paid over the following 10 years. And so that was all due in by 2020. And I don't actually know whether it was paid in full or on time, but I guess one of the things I know the landlord is, the current seller is working with the current buyer on finding out. And obviously, if it's been paid, then excellent. If it has not been paid, you know, that's a compliance issue with chapter 91. And as I stated earlier, we're happy to state that we will comply with all relevant chapter 91 requirements.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Any other council of questions? All right, seeing now, we're going to circle back to Pixel. That's what it says, Pixel. It's probably your phone, so I don't know who Pixel XL is. So can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, hi. Is this Steve?
This is. Name and address, name and address for the record, please.
This is Catherine Ryan, and my address is 17 High Rock in Gloucester.
Thank you.
So I have served on a bunch of committees and including downtown and in that area. And I did write one of the councils a little bit ahead of time. I had some questions about this. I'm not saying anything about the chapter 91 that is out of my wheelhouse. But I did go back to look at the addition as you face the property and look at the left that was added. And I went back to look at questions that were asked and what happened with that. And I don't know if there's a possibility of speaking with the, the new proposal for removing that. That was a view shed from Main Street. And I think it would be, you know, assuming that the, you know, whatever's negotiated between the industrial use that needs to be done in chapter 91. But assuming that's all figured out, that was a view shed that you had even when lobster pots were there pre-2010, all the way through when you could see Cape Pond ice. And it, it could beckon you between Virgilio's across Rogers to the water. And when that was put up, that was a public view shed that was gone. And I understand that it was probably necessary for the prior business and related to, I don't know if it's trash, I don't know if it was brewery-related, but I can't tell on the plans. And if there was a chance that that could also be used as outdoor space, you know, I would, I would say that would probably be a smart business move as well, not just considering, you know, the front space.
All right, Kathy, thank you. That, this is not before us this evening. We're here for the council permit. I think that's more of a building department issue.
Well, but that's not on the plans. So that's why I'm calling. And, and it wasn't, they're just not rendered. They're rendered from the position coming at it, from taking the turn at St. Peter's. And I didn't see a question referencing it anywhere. I don't know if it means that, do they now have that as forevermore, whoever buys that property has that, that corridor? You know, does it mean that they can build the footprint beyond to the left? I think those are all part of the question.
Okay. Anything else, Kathy?
No, thanks.
All right. And then we have Patty one more time. Patty, can you hear me? Since we're suspending the rules.
Thanks, Patty Page, three title Cove Way. I think in the license, it does require the public bathrooms to be publicly noticed. You need to sign there.
Yeah.
So I, I know that had been spoken to. I just wanted to sharpen that up a little. And the economic support that's supposed to be contributed to the port maintenance and infrastructure fund is paid by the tenant. It was the brewery that was charged that, not Doyon, the owner. So I don't know that the change in ownership is going to matter. It's really with the tenant of the restaurant. And that's why I was bringing it up with this permit. So I, I'm sure Joel will cover it. I just, you know, been hearing different things and, and I just think that if it's supposed to be part of the process, it should be addressed. And if it isn't, it'll be addressed later. Thanks.
Thank you, Patty. All right. Attorney FaVaza rebuttal.
Sure, just to Patty's point, she's, she's right on the last license and I'll, I'll read it as far as signage. So the restaurant building shall include free restrooms open to the public during hours of operation of the restaurant. Signage shall be prominently displayed in the building, indicating the hours and availability of the restrooms. And so again, I'd like you to, that condition will move forward into a new license and will be implied with. The other point that Patty made was correct in that the previous license was in the name of the Cape Town Brewing Company. My understanding is that the Doyons allowed them to make the application. It has not been decided yet whether or not the tenant of the building, which would be Neil, or the new owner of the building is going to get the license, the chapter 91 license into their name. And I suspect it's going to be the landlord this time around, not the tenant that remains the landlord's with essentially. I don't know that this, the next license will be in Neil Mavor or Oak to Ember's name. It may be likely in the landlord's name after the sale's complete. So that's why I'm, as I said, as far as that license affects the way in which Neil conducts the restaurant, absolutely look to comply. But I don't want to speak out of school as far as the rest of it, because it may not be in the purview of the tenant's responsibility or, you know, pertaining to what we're discussing exactly tonight. And then if you'd like me to address, I wasn't, my audio clipped out. Was there concern about, it was on the wires over the awnings? What was the issue that was blocking the view corridor? You're muted.
An oak building on the public access, the, so if you're staring at the building on Roger Street on the left, I think she was.
Yeah, so it's right. So the addition, yeah, the addition is remaining, but that was permitted in 2013 and is included. If it's the 2013 addition that kind of juts out on the eastern side, that was included on the plans that went to the council and showing, I believe it's where the loading bay is. that was included on the plans that went into the council and shown, I believe, where the loading bay is. So that, that does. And so that's, that's planned to be reused and kept as is.
All right. So we have somebody else that has their hand up. Hold on one second. So we're going to suspend the rules for somebody who has to suspend the rules for everybody. All it says is CK. I don't know who CK is. So can you have your name and address for the record, please? Hello, CK. You had your hand up. I've allowed you to talk. CK? Okay. We can't be here all night. Counsel Holmgren?
I just wanted Attorney Favazza to clarify for the benefit of the if the owner of the restaurant, if the applicant wants to make any changes to what we are seeing in front of us tonight, he would have to come back to the council. Is that correct? Because this is a special permit?
Right. Here's, here's a lawyer answer for you. It depends, right? So what happens is the first step is you would go to the building inspector, and the building inspector would look at what the change was. So for example, if the barn, instead of having a 45-degree angle, was going to have a 70-degree angle, he'd say, you know, to Bill Sandmore, whoever's the building inspector at the time, do I need to act with the council for this? And they, in their discretion, would either say, no, this is a de minimis change. I have authority to allow it. Or he'd say, I feel like this is substantially changing the intent of the project. You need to go back and get this blessed out of council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Jen. And in my past 10 years, what we've been doing is if there's been anything, and this is to answer your question, Jen, too, and just piggyback on what Joel. The council has the authority to pull any council permit back for review. So if they think that they've gone over the permit or not fulfilling their permit, then the council can bring them back, ask the questions, and figure out at that time. So. Okay. And that's not just this council. That's future councils, past councils. That's everybody. All right. Any council, any more council questions? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report, please.
On a motion by Counsel Holmgren, seconded by Counsel Pet, the Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council grant to Neil Mavor, on behalf of owner Gary M. Doian, comma, trustee, comma, a special permit, special counsel permit 2021-003 for the property located at Rogers Street, number nine, map seven, comma, lot 15, in the MI District pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinance, section 2.3.4, section nine, restaurant with outdoor seating or with takeout constituting more than 20% of total business or both. This permit is made on the basis of the plans and elevations dated April 29, 2021, and submitted to the city clerk on May 17, 2021, entitled site plan, drawn by Gateway Consultants, Inc., PO Box 6085, Gloucester, Mass. Subject to new information and/or debate that results from the public hearing. The special counsel permit is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and the purpose of the zoning ordinance, and I so move. Second.
Motion's been made by Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counsel Holmgren. So we were looking for some language, Joel, possibly for an amendment?
Sure. Through the chair, I would be comfortable taking a condition that says the applicant shall consult with the harbor master. And I'm actually looking to get the title of the official Fisherman's Association that, that kind of, as Patty knows, that runs the lobster trap storage right now. And I think you can firm that up in the written decision if you vote tonight, and say that applicant will consult with our master and with the Fisherman's Association to to finalize a plan for exercising the water-dependent use portions of the property in the most harmonious way possible.
So moved.
Right. All right. Hold on. I think Val, Val should read it to amend it. But I don't think, I don't, I don't think we should include anybody's name in it. I think it should just be the harbor master and the Fisherman's Association chair.
So Joel, I'm trying to, to write down everything you said. I, I got most of it through the chair. You okay if I don't ask this? The applicant shall consult with the harbor master and the Fisherman's Association to finalize a plan for exercising the water use properties.
And water-dependent use.
Okay. Use properties?
On the property.
Use on the property. Okay. So, so I have two amendments. First, I'd like to amend the motion by adding a comma after Neil Mavor and striking on behalf of, in addition to adding after restaurant with outdoor seating or with taking, takeout constituting more than 20% of total business or both, by adding, the applicant shall consult with the harbor master and the Fisherman's Association to finalize, finalize a plan for exercising the water-dependent use of the property, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counsel Holmgren. I don't have a problem. What, I mean, what is, what is the sense of removing on behalf of and adding a comma? And still, still the same thing.
Yeah, that was a recommendation in the city clerk's office to be more consistent with the application. And I called the applicant today to make sure that he was comfortable with that.
All right. So we have an amendment. Does everybody understand what the amendment is? Any questions on the amendment discussion? All right. Seeing none, we'll call for the roll for the amendment. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox. I'm sorry, Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
I'm just going through my memory here for everybody. Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc? Yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
And Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Amendment, the amendment passes on a roll call of seven in favor, two absent. All right. So back to the main motion with the amendments. Any other council of discussion? All right. Seeing none, I'll start off with Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
This is our discussion as we vote, correct?
I asked if there was any other discussion. We had the amendment to the amendment. And then I asked if there was a discussion with the amendment for the main motion. So we're on the voting part of it. Did you have a discussion for the?
I do have, because I didn't do my narrative. I'm sorry. But can I just discuss it before I vote?
Sure.
Thank you. So we met with the applicant on June 2, 2021, at P and D. The public hearing was duly noticed in the Gloucester Daily Times on June 7 and June 14. The special counsel permit requests a restaurant with outdoor seating constituting of more than 20% of total business located in the Marine Industrial District. We believe that it meets all the requirements of standards to be applied under 1.8.3. And we also believe from our P and D meeting that the, there, it is consistent with the previous property, and there are no issues with compliance of 5.18. And I will be supporting this for all of those reasons. So my vote is yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
All right. Counsel LeBlanc? I'm going to vote yes under everything that Counsel Gilman just said. The Gloucester zoning order in section 1.8.3, the chapter 19, 5.18, and the, everything else that is in this permit this evening, I don't see anything detrimental to the neighborhood or anything else that's going on. It's the same purpose that's been there for quite a few years. So my vote is yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes. As regards to 1.8.3, the applicant has submitted all the arguments for that. And I agree with the, the arguments that he has submitted. And under 5.18, I believe it's the same use. It's a restaurant. It's not a waterfront property. There's no commercial fisherman being displaced. And I am going to vote yes.
Thank you, John. Counsel Memhard?
Consistent with what the other counselors have commented already. I think this will be a net addition to the waterfront economy and Gloucesters visitor economy. It's appropriate for the site, and the use is consistent with the prior use. And I wish Neil Mavor all the best in terms of his endeavor, bringing additional economic life to downtown waterfront section of Gloucester. So yes.
Thank you, Scott. And the view gets to look at one of, one of the most iconic buildings in the city across the harbor there. All right. So motion passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, two absent. All right. Good job, everyone. Thank you, Joel. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order is Counsel's request to the mayor.
All right. So Counsel O'Hara?
Thank you. I just, well, we have a blood drive on July 1 at the Magnolia Library from 10 to 3. Right now, there's an extreme, extreme shortage of blood. It was noted in the Boston Globe. So people would like to participate. I know many of other counselors do. You can call 1-800-Red Cross and make an appointment. I just want to take a thank you to the Gloucester Police Department, the lifeguards who are patrolling the beaches, and the fire department. Obviously, they do a wonderful job, and they put their lives on the line 24/7. And we, we obviously sometimes take them for granted, but I just want to extend a thank you for them. The Worcester Police Department recently lost a police officer who was trying to save a 14-year-old boy in a pond, and he too lost his life. So these men and women who put on the uniforms every day, I can't thank, thank them. I know the full council feels the same way by one extent. A sincere thank you to them. And that's it. And I thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. I will be at the blood drive. You can count on that.
Thanks, Steve.
Counsel Pat?
I want to also thank all the first responders for their time. And obviously, here in Gloucester, it's a very busy time with the beaches and the additional traffic, et cetera. So thank you to the police department, the fire department, the EMTs. And a special shout out to the DPW workers who constantly have to sort of pick up after those that don't seem to care. I don't, I'm not sure what it's about, but they do a phenomenal job with the size of the workforce they have of keeping our public properties looking wonderful. I want to thank them all and thank the administration for their work on this.
Thank you, Barry. Counsel Holmgren?
Just, everybody have a very safe and happy Fourth of July.
Thank you, Jen. You, too. Counsel Gilman?
Yeah, I have no requests, but I just wanted to piggyback on the comments and special shout out to the police department. Their incredibly great role models in terms of community policing. Their accessibility to the public, to our children, to our students, to our neighborhoods is just second to none. And it's really appreciated. And also a shout out to Public Works for all they're doing to cover the beaches. In addition to all the signs that they've put up in support of our residents' parking, and the folks at City Hall who give out all the stickers. I mean, they've had huge lines for many, many weeks, and they are treating people with, with a smile and, and lots of patience. So it just goes a long way. So, and thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Counsel McCarthy?
No request to the mayor. I'll echo what everybody said about our public safety and summer employees, and wish everybody a happy Fourth.
You, too, John. Thank you. Counsel Memhard?
You know what's been said, and also congratulations to all the students who successfully completed this remarkable COVID-19 school year and our recent Gloucester High School graduates. So congratulations to all of you, and thanks to the administration for all their support. Good night.
Thank you, Scott. I don't have any requests. I just want to, you know, talk about how our debates go up here. We have some really good debates. This is what city council's about. We don't have to agree, agree on everything, but we can agree to disagree. Jen, you did a great job tonight. Going against the grain. You do what you have to do. And I have a lot of respect for what you do every single day, and I appreciate you. So. But like I said, this is city council. We have to agree to disagree sometimes and have some really good debates. And we have to work together and get things done, and that's the main point of this. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. It's been, move, move one, two. Who wants to move it?
I'll second the second, which is the second.
So.
Moving seconded. All right. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes, thanks, everybody.
Counsel LeBlanc? Yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes, thank you, and good night.
And before I adjourn us, I see Joanne popped up. Is there anything you want to say, Joanne, before we, okay, just goodbye? All right. Motion to adjourn passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, two absent. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Night.